Chairman Gann, recording has begun.
Thank you. It is six o'clock. I call this meeting to order. We have a quorum. Councilman Bryant Ward called about an hour ago. She will not be able to attend the meeting, but we do have a quorum. And with that, I'd like to call upon Commissioner High. Can you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we embark upon the agenda, is there any change to the agenda? Not hearing any, and Kelly has reported that the meeting is being recorded. Review and approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any comments or questions on the previous meeting minutes? Not hearing any. Is there a motion to approve?
I approve the minute from the previous meeting.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded by show of hands. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. The minutes have been approved as presented. Matters of discussion. We have a special exception for fuel sales this evening, and we'll go to Director Harrington for his staff report.
Good evening, Planning Commission. For the record, Janine Harrington, Director of Planning for the town. So the special exception request before you tonight is for the Rosewood Corner Development for a special exception for fuel sales. And since we do have some new members, and just to reiterate for the public what a special exception is, in our code, we do have uses that are permitted by right, so they can move forward in the process without any conditions or extra approvals. We have uses that are permitted with conditions that can be approved by staff, and then we have a special exception which requires the Board of Appeals to, which is a quasi judicial board, to make the determination that the proposal is approvable. There are extra conditions for special exceptions, mainly determining with traffic, health and safety that we have to look at throughout the development process. So for this project, it is zoned commercial highway. It's currently under construction. Originally, in 2021, the Planning Commission approved the major site plan for this mixed-use development. It included a overall shopping center with a grocery store, retail space, gas station, family daycare center, office space, a bank, and a fast food restaurant. However, in November of 2021, the site plan was amended by removing the daycare, the office space, the bank, and in its place, there was 193 multifamily units that were approved. So that moved forward and was ultimately approved by the Planning Commission on December 7, 2021. To date, the grocery store has been built and is completed and open to the public. They're working on some of the retail space as well as the multifamily apartment units, and they are now seeking the official approval for a special exception for the gas station that was a part of that site plan as directed by the town code. So the town code has, under Chapter 191-52, has special exception use standards for fuel sales. So the first standard is that the use shall not rent or sell motor vehicles, trailers, or general replacement parts. And this, they will not be selling motor vehicles, trailer, or general replacement parts. Second standard is the use shall not overhaul, tune up, or repair motors or bodies, or provide brake lining, different wheel alignment services, et cetera. They will not be doing any of those things on the site. They will simply be a convenience store with gas sales. The third standard is when such use occupies a corner lot, the ingress and egress driveways must be located at least 75 feet from the point of the intersection of the street line and the corner arc. And they have noted that the ingress and egress driveways are located at least 75 feet away from the point of intersection as depicted on the site plan. The standard number four, open storage of motor vehicles or trailers, except those temporarily waiting fueling during the business hours of establishment, is prohibited. And they noted that the proposed use does not include open storage of motor vehicles or trailers. The fifth standard is gas station, the gasoline pumps and other service appliances must be located on a lot that's at least 20 feet behind the building line, and all service stored or similar activities in connection with such use must be conducted entirely within the building. They have noted that the gasoline pumps or other service appliance are located at least 20 feet behind the building, of the building line, and that all service storage or other activities connected with the use are being conducted entirely within the building. The sixth standard is a traffic study shall be submitted with a completed application that analyzes the adequacy of the road network serving the site and the impact of traffic to be generated by the use, which shall indicate a level service of C or better can be achieved and maintained. So the applicant did submit a traffic impact study as part of the major site plan review, and they did provide updated numbers in 2021. The intersection of Rosewood Road and the Rosewood Crossing Shopping Center is projected to operate at a level of service A in the morning and level of service C in the evening during peak hour at full buildout. The staff will also note the improvements along Rosewood Road, including the traffic signal, were reviewed and approved by Charles County Government. The seventh standard is that the facility shall provide sufficient queuing space for anticipated peak volume, and they have noted that the facility does allow for reasonable queuing space for the anticipated volume at peak hours. Fuel tanks should not be permitted in any mapped floodplain. There is no floodplain on the site. In standard number nine, the use will not create points of vehicular conflict with adjoining highway or adversely affecting the orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood. And we have noted that the proposed use will not create any vehicular points of conflict, and it does not adversely affect the orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood. Staff is recommending approval of the special exception in accordance with Town Code Section 191-52.h.11. And I will remind the Planning Commission that you are a recommending body for special exceptions. So your consensus tonight would be to either recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions to the Board of Appeals. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have of me, and the applicant is here. Should you have any questions of them?
Is the applicant represented?
Yes.
Is there anything you would like to add?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, who's speaking?
Hi, my name is Matthew Todesco. I'm local land use and zoning council for the owner and applicant Rosewood Corner Venture LLC, who is personally represented before you this evening by Mr. Rick Bailey. I don't know if Drew Gorman's there or not, they're off camera, but I know Mr. Bailey is there in person. I want to, just your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, personally want to thank you for the accommodations to appear remotely this evening. Both myself and Mike Lenhart are double booked this evening with another hearing starting at 7:30 to sign another jurisdiction. So I do personally appreciate the accommodation and personally apologize for not being there in person, notwithstanding I absolutely would have been there, but Mr. Bailey is there in person. We don't really have anything further to add beyond Ms. Harrington's comments. I would like to thank Ms. Harrington publicly for her review and working with us on this project. As Ms. Harrington indicated, this goes back more than three years, actually longer, with respect to the proposed development of Rosewood Corner. It is moving along successfully, and as pointed out by staff, this is an anticipatory application that was approved by the Planning Commission with respect to the major site plan that has always contemplated a gas station at this development. So with that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, unless Mr. Bailey has anything to add. And also with Mr. Bailey, I would note that Tony Olickson with COA Barrett LLC, who's a civil engineer, is there with you all this evening in person. And Mr. Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic and Consulting is attending virtually with me as well. So I think that rounds out everybody who's here on our behalf. We're happy to answer any questions. We would respectfully request the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval as recommended by your staff, and again, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bailey, you have anything to add? Thank you. To the Commissioners, any comments, questions to present to either Director Harrington or the applicant? Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I have several questions for the applicant. When I read over your traffic memo and the traffic impact analysis, a few questions came up. It's about the trip generation. In that portion. And well, before I do that, the first question I have, because it's relevant to my other questions, is does the trip generations that were projected in 2020 and 2021, are they reflective of the trip generations that are actually taking place at the supermarket now?
Commissioner, I would have Mike Lenhart, our traffic engineer, who prepared the traffic impact analysis that was previously done and reviewed, as well as the supplemental memorandum that's been submitted in this application, direct the response to that question.
Yes, good evening, sir. Michael Lenhart, for the record, with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. The memo that was prepared reflected everything that was approved in the major site plan. The, I have not visited the site as of recent, so I'm not exactly familiar with what's up and operating, if anything has been completed at this point, but it does reflect the full buildout of the site based on the major site plan that was approved.
Okay, so I just want to say that the reason I'm asking, because we do have the supermarket there, so we would know if the numbers are higher or lower. So I would think that would be relevant going forward to see how much this fuel waiver would add to trip generations. My second question is, I didn't understand the trip generation report. So when I look at the 2020, now I'm using the traffic memo, so you know which one I'm talking about. It's also an impact analysis, specifically the memo. So I went through and looked at the numbers, the projections of the trip generations. And once again, what I noticed was that between two of the pages, the daycare, retail center was never on both. So that would indicate to me that that was a decision made prior to, or at least in 2020, when this was first planned.
Correct. The major site plan was amended. So it was originally approved in, what was it, February of 2021? And then they came back and revised the plan to remove the daycare, office space, bank, and then in its place, they added 193 apartments. So they did amend that during that time period. So that's why that doesn't match up.
Okay. And so when I match these two up, and this goes back to the number of trips in there, I noticed that the AM totals for trips, 259, is only seven higher than the AM total for the one in 2021. And I was wondering if somebody could explain to me that seven trip difference, because I could not understand it. I tried to go through the numbers and figure out where that was coming from based on this. I don't understand that. How do we know, what does that seven trip difference come from?
Commissioner, if I may, before Mr. Lenhart responds, I think in helping frame the answer to that question, which are a good question, I think, Mike, if you could, in explaining and answering the question specifically, help explain the ITE and trip generation and numbers that are done from the previous study and what's required on the ITE for certain uses, as well as any previous traffic impact analysis you did based upon any counts.
Certainly. So the, we, I'm confident in our trip generation analysis for the site. It's based on the Institute for Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. The 11th edition is the current manual that's used by all jurisdictions across the country to evaluate trip generation characteristics for different land uses. The the memo that we prepared dated September 18 included the trip generation on page one that was done for the original project in the spring of 2020 that generated a total of 259 primary peak hour trips in the morning, 435 primary peak hour trips in the evening. The and that was updated then in the in 2021 to reflect the current proposal. And, you know, it increased the, removed the bank, it increased the multifamily slightly, and that results in a total of 252 AM peak hour primary trips and 241 PM peak hour primary trips. That, you know, that's just the difference in land uses and the trips generated by each use minus the pass-by traffic.
So, just as a follow-up, so the only difference between the two sheets is the taking out of the bank. The bank generates 30 trips, and I'm talking only the AM hours. I still don't understand that seven trip variance just for the AM hours, because the only difference between the two is the bank, and the bank generates way more in the AM hours when I went through the numbers, unless I'm reading it wrong. So I'm not concerned about the afternoon hours.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers here as well. I would, I can go through and add these numbers off. It would take me a few moments, but the, just to confirm that there wasn't a typo in that math, but the, I mean, the bottom line is it removes the drive-in bank, which takes out 65 minus, 65 trips in the evening peak hour minus 23 pass-by trips. And it it adds a few trips for the multifamily house in the evening peak hour, but all in all, it's pretty much a wash. The difference really is inconsequential. And if you'd like, I could run the math on that, but it would take me a few moments to just double check them.
That's okay. I only have one last question, and it's probably in the plan, but for some reason, my mind is drawing a blank right now. I'm assuming there's handicap parking at the gas station. I don't remember seeing it, but I'm sure it's in there. That's one.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Banks?
Thank you. And again, let me apologize. It may have been in the plan somewhere, but can you remind me, how many fuel tanks are we talking about?
16 fueling positions.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. It's eight pumps with two fueling positions per pump, so you can fuel on both sides. 16 fueling position, eight pumps.
Thank you. I do have another question as well. A while back in December, when we approved the parking waiver, there was already a variance of 132, so I'm wondering, is there any impact to the parking as a result of this new convenience store?
No. No.
No, that was accounted for with the original major site plan. There was always a gas station proposed on the site. This is the formal process of getting that use approved through special exception, but they always anticipated a gas station on that site.
Thank you. I don't recall that. Thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner High, you have any comments?
Good evening. Back to the traffic. I looked at the, on page 10 of the statement of justification, it refers to the aforementioned Institute for Transportation's Trip Generation Manual. And I looked at the dependencies, and this is the 2021 document, the 11th edition. When it's a vehicle pass by rates by land use, shows AM and BM. And the date, and I know this is not your date, but the date is from Maryland, from 1992. And the most recent is from the year 2000. And the ones from 2000 are larger ones. These are ones with 16 or 12 and 16 dual-use pumps. So just to understand how much the information in the dependencies from the 11th edition of the Trip Generation Manual was used in your calculations. Thank you.
Well, the traffic study that was conducted was conducted in June or in April of 2020. And then we, bear with me, we updated, I'm opening that report right now so I can confirm this. All right. So I would need to clarify that it was conducted in the spring of 2020. At that time, the ITE 10th edition was the most recent, and so the pass-by rates and trip generation for the the major site plan approval was based on the 10th edition, and the pass-by rates were also accordingly taken from that document. And that was reviewed and approved, and these uses have not changed substantially from the 10th to 11th edition.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think the substantive point, I think, that Mr. Lenhart's trying to make is that this proposed use that does require a special exception has always and historically been studied and tested with this development. And this development at full buildout is what the numbers are based upon, notwithstanding the revisions that were made in 2021, which were accounted for with the removal of the bank, the 40,000 square foot office building, the daycare, and the addition of the 193 multifamily units. All that was studied with respect to the traffic impacts associated with the development. And so I just want to make sure that that point was made with respect to that. This is not necessarily a new use that is being contemplated. It's a use that's always been contemplated with the development of this property as it was tested originally with the now existing but prior proposed development. So all of the traffic analyses, trips associated with it are within that study that's been reviewed and approved to facilitate this development, as well as to make sure that there would be no traffic impact, negative traffic impacts associated with the development, notwithstanding we're now before you with a special exception, but it's a special exception for a use that's been previously contemplated and studied as part of all these prior studies. So thank you for allowing me to just offer that.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Matt.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioner High? Okay, I have a couple of questions. The first one, Director Harrington might have already answered. We originally had called for a gas station. And just to be clear, that would have always required a special exception.
Yes.
Okay. And my next question may have already been answered in a previous meeting, but I'll bring it up. We went from the change. We deleted the bank and the daycare center. We put in 193 apartment complex. Can you help me understand why we decided not to do a daycare center?
Okay, I may have to defer to Mr. Bailey on that with respect to, I would just note that that's already been approved, but I think for edification of the Commissioners, I'd ask Mr. Bailey to come up to maybe explain the basis for that.
I concur that it was already approved.
Yeah, information's good information to have, so, any information, I mean.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, it's Rick Bailey for the record. When we did their original layout, we had certain uses that we knew we definitely were going to be able to put on the site. For instance, the grocery store, the 7,000 square foot retail center, retail building, we knew what the users were going to be for that. The other users were speculative. We didn't know if we were going to be able to attract the uses for them. We were not able to attract a daycare facility. We're able to attract the user for the apartment unit. So that's the reason we went with them and modified the site plan, which was ultimately approved.
Okay, thank you. I guess the thought that is driving my question is we put in 193 apartments, which in my mind increases the demand for daycare. But I also understand in the business, you need to have someone walk up and say, "I'll do that," and that's not the case. Okay. And the last question I have is for you, Director Harrington. On your list of, I guess it's nine items that you went through, number seven, the facility shall provide sufficient queuing space, so forth. I'm sorry, number six. At the very end, it says the traffic, so forth, was reviewed and approved by Charles County Government. And since the fuel sales was always originally planned, can we confirm the Charles County Government had that in their review?
The queuing?
No, the the fuel sales facility. Is that always in their plan?
Yes.
So this is nothing new to them?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners? Okay, then we're at that point where I entertain a motion to recommend approval of the special exception for the next step would be the Board of Appeals, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion?
I can motion that we approve, recommend approval of the special exception.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. By show of hands, all those in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you to the applicants and those both here presently, physically and virtually. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Planning Commission Rules and Procedures, our final draft. This is our third look at this.
Yes.
Hopefully our last.
That was the third and final, three times the charm.
We'll go to you for any comments, Director Harrington.
So the one update, everything else was pretty much the same. I know that Councilwoman Bryant Ward had a question regarding the public hearing procedures, and it was on page six of the document. Number five, review of sign-in. And it was, "The chair at their discretion may request larger groups or associations to select an individual to speak for the group for the purpose of avoiding repetitive testimony. The selection of a spokesperson is not intended to prevent the non-repetitive individual testimony of group members. The chair may also take such other actions to facilitate the orderly expeditious receipt of testimony and other evidence and argument." And she asked if that was legal to do that, if we could. So I did send that to the town attorney, and he said, "Yes, this is fine. The chair can always recognize someone that wants to speak individually." And then he did suggest that we change the language a bit to be a little bit more on the positive side, so I did change that. So that's highlighted in yellow to see that change, that the selection of a spokesperson is intended to prevent repetitive testimony of individual group members, and just keep it straight and to the point. And that would be the only major significant change between what we reviewed last time and this time, and just reviewing for legal sufficiency.
So not to interrupt you, that takes me to a question that I had that you've just answered. I was wondering why we had that section highlighted in yellow. Once this ultimately gets approved, it will no longer be highlighted in yellow.
Correct.
Okay. Did you have any more to report?
No.
That's it. Again, can I ask a question?
Commissioner Banks?
Thank you. In section two, where it talks about the planning commission is tasked with dot, dot, dot. That seems to be extremely broad and crossing over other aspects of the local government, and it's inconsistent with what is currently on the town's site with respect to the mission of the planning commission.
You talk about section two on page one.
On the very first page. Where it says the planning commission is tasked with preserving and protecting the public health, safety and general welfare of all the inhabitants.
It's generic language.
But it's but it's inconsistent with what's on the on the town's website with respect to the mission of the planning commission. And again, I I think it crosses over some other aspects of the town's government. When you talk about public safety, you're talking about the police department. When you talk about public health, you're talking about maybe broader Charles County Health Department. I don't know, but it seems to be a very broad and ever encompassing mission or task that I haven't yet seen that as part of the work that we do.
It's part of when we're looking at like for, you know, the past one that we just looked at, for example, looking at traffic, making sure that there's adequate facilities and water and sewer, and that's all ties into the public health and safety.
It's a stretch. Is there a reason why it's not going to be consistent with what's on the on the town's page?
I don't know it specifically is on the town's page.
It says that we maintain and improve the character of our residential and commercial communities by making them more livable, walkable, accessible and sustainable. Balance infrastructure needs and growth. Provide planning analysis and recommendations. Focus on customer service and development process. Just just curious why that wouldn't be what we're tasked with here.
The language that I took for this was out of the Maryland Department of Planning example, so that's why it's in there.
Are we going to change what's on the website to reflect this?
We can.
That was a question.
We guess we can.
So do you have a preference, Commissioner Banks, we change this document or the website?
From my perspective, I believe what's on the website is more consistent with the work that we are tasked with doing. But if Director Harrington seems is more confident that this broader set of duties is consistent.
And if I recall this, you had also done some what's the word I'm looking for comparison with other municipalities.
Correct.
Documents. And we're this document that you're proposing is consistent with that.
Yes.
So then maybe the website does bear some relooking at.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other questions or comments from members of the commission? Commissioner, hi, I know you had a comment.
I just had, there's this page two paragraph six, A six alpha. The last sentence, it says, the last part of the sentence says for the absent member he is replacing. They felt the document we say he she, so maybe just there as well. Thank you.
And I have one comment, page three, paragraph two B. Want to make sure. I think we talked about this, but the way I'm reading it, it says alternatively, the member may recuse himself or herself from voting on that specific application. And I would recommend that we put in there the recusal should include also discussion on the matter. I would, I don't think it would be appropriate for Commissioner to be involved in the discussion and then recuse him or herself from the vote. You see where I mean is okay.
Yes, we can change that to alternatively, the member may recuse him herself, himself or herself from discussion and voting on that specific application.
Yes. Any other comment? Commissioner Sampson, any comment? Okay, so we've just talked about some, I think, minor changes to be made to the document. Is there and then I guess a matter of order. Is this something we vote on or just go by consensus?
Vote. Let's see. So the rules of procedure shall require unanimous consent vote of approval.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for whether or not we should move forward with this document. Anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we make a state of changes and move forward with approval of the document.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to move forward with the document reflecting tonight's changes. All in favor, show of hands? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. This has been three meetings worth of work for this, and thank you. A long time coming for a document like this.
Yes, and I'll make those two changes, and then I will let you know that we so we can schedule getting this signed.
Okay, great. Matters of information, back to Director Harrington for Planning Department project updates.
So I really don't have too much. Pine Grove is moving forward with the the sites that have been approved. There we just did a pre construction meeting for Neighborhood Q. Rosewick, as we've noted, is moving forward. They're building the apartments. So we have quite a bit going on. The dash in at the corner Exxon Station, they're getting ready to get their grading permit to demolish the existing gas station and rebuild Magnolia Gardens, which is the 72 low income tax credit housing units over off of Washington Avenue. We're getting ready to have their pre construction meeting and issue their grading permit this month. So we have quite a lot of construction and action going on at the moment. There is one thing I wanted to bring up for discussion at the November 7th Planning Commission meeting. And it's regarding religious assembly uses within the residential zones. So in when we did the zoning code update in 2018, we had created the land use tables for residential, commercial and and so on and so forth. We originally had only broken out housing, the different housing types, and then we had kind of an all other permissible uses section. And we're coming to find, and we've done this with educational facilities and with libraries, different things like that, that there needs to be separate use. Yeah, dimensional standards for those different types of uses. That brings me to religious assembly. So we have, I think, at least three, there may be more, but at least three properties that have religious assembly that are zoned residential. And it's making it difficult for them to do enhancements or upgrades additions to buildings because the impervious area is lower for residential than it is for commercial. So I'm looking for a consensus if you're okay with looking at separating religious assembly out from all other permitted permissible uses on the residential tabulation to create its own dimensional standards.
So you're not looking for that consensus tonight? That would come up at the November.
Just a consensus that you're okay with me proceeding and drafting that to bring to your attention at the November 7th meeting.
Is there any objection?
I'm looking if there's any concern regarding that.
No objection.
Okay, so I'll draft that and bring that to the November 7th meeting. And again, I'll bring in the examples from what we did with the school, education facilities, public library. We separated some of those out just to give them their own dimensional standards. That way they can continue with the work that they're doing.
Excellent.
Question. Just so I understand what you're saying. So when you say religious assemblies, are these full blown churches, mosques, temples, synagogues, or is it just a bunch of people gathering at somebody's house, like having a very large Bible study or just so I have a context of it?
And so it's a range. So there's actual churches, and then there's actually the Willing Helpers Group. They're one of the examples, and they're here tonight. So it's a place where people can congregate. They do not only, you know, religious activities, but they do outreach for the public, for the homeless. They do a lot of, you know, meal prepping and things like that. So they, for example, they are looking to expand, but the R10 zone does not allow them to do so just because of the requirement for maximum lot coverage. And we're noticing, I noticed that there's a few others that have the same situation. So looking at it from a holistic standpoint, I think the best way to move forward would be to amend the zoning code rather than trying to make every single one of them do a variance or change things for that.
So do I conclude that you will bring a proposed amendment? Okay.
Yes.
Other questions, comments for Director Harrington? As you completed your report.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel update, counsel. Excuse me. Thought I had that turned off. Councilwoman Evelyn Brian Ward is not here tonight, but I want to make sure the Commissioners are aware that we have two applicants. And Councilwoman and I will be interviewing them, I think, on October 12th. So that will help. Fill up the group. Are there any other matters to be brought up for the good of the meeting?
Mr. President, this is Mayor James. Can you hear me?
Mayor James, we can hear you.
I am so sorry to interrupt, but as a just a point so that your Commissioners know, we did lose one of our councilmen. Jim Goldsmith passed away a week ago. And his funeral will be on Monday, which it will be at Holy Ghost and issue at viewing will be at 9:30 in the morning on Monday. And the beer, the service will be at 11:30 and the burial at 12:30.
Thank you for that update. I'm sorry I didn't bring up the fact of his loss. It's a big loss to the town, big loss to lots of family and friends. And thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, sorry it wasn't better news, but thank you for allowing me to let you know.
Sure enough. Any other things to be brought up for the good of the meeting? Okay, at this time, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much. We'll see you on November 7th.